Hey, we will now call our May 24th, 2021 Board of Trustees Meeting to Order. Entertainer motion for the adoption of the agenda and approval of the consent agenda items.
This is approved.
Second.
Probably move by Ms. Darby.
I have a question.
Okay, probably move by Ms. Darby, second by Ms. Coates. Ms. Coates?
So, I approved it because the policies that we're putting under potential consent today are very minor. I mean, one is the lactation, South Carolina Lactation Act. The other two were based on what the teacher had asked us, the diversity coach had asked us to implement. But I would caution us that first and second reading of policies going directly to potential consent and only being read once in the Committee of the Whole for first reading does seem to be a little less than transparent in some of those, particularly if we cross policies that affect the public or our operations or our staff. I just wanted to caution leadership that we're now putting first and second reading and we're not bringing it to the second Cal meeting either, and it just may want to look at that.
Okay, duly noted. All right, the move by Ms. Darby, second by Ms. Coates. Is Ms. Coate on line by chance?
Yes, I am. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Are you voting electronic or by voice?
I just did it.
Thank you. Ms. Green?
Just did it.
Okay, the motion passes. Entertainer motion for the approval of minutes.
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Coates, second by Ms. Darby. Are there any questions? Hearing none, we ask that you please cast your vote. Okay, that motion passes. Entertainer motion to go into executive session.
So moved.
For those of you that's not a part of the executive session item discussion, we ask that you please excuse yourself at this time. Okay, we will now revine back into open session at this time now. I ask that you please pause for a moment of silence. I ask that you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance to the flag.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and the United Republic, where we stand as one nation under God in the visible and veridicity of this law.
Just want to take a moment to recognize the National Mental Health Awareness Month. The Charleston County School District is proud to recognize May as Mental Health Month. The school district has adopted mission critical action items to address community needs, and thanks to a 5 million project prevent grant, the district will be able to expand resources in our highest need schools for the next five years. The district has medical experts in place to provide a variety of mental health counseling services to address the challenges fueled by COVID-19. We do not know what the long-term lasting effects of the pandemic will be on our children and their families, but we want to offer support and resources to those who need them. The board is committed to increasing and improving those services so we can better support our students through these challenging situations. This district has and will always be focused on addressing the whole child. From academics to social and emotional learning to basic needs, CCSD is committed to serving children and their families in all capacities. We'd like to give a special thank you to all of our guidance counselors and mental health workers who every day show up and stand up for our students. Again, we recognize National Mental Health Awareness Month and the great accomplishment that we are ascribing to for our students and our families. Also like to take this time and to recognize that we have had some tragedies recently here in our district. Death is tragic, so untimely, especially when it comes to our young children. I ask you to join me this evening in remembering two of our beloved Charleston County School District children. Their families need our thoughts and prayers and support during this unimaginable time. Ron Janey Smith, an eighth grade student at Morningside Middle School, and Naira Reed, a six-month-old from St. James, San T Head Start. Please join me in observance of a moment of silence for these families. Their hearts are broken and their spirits moan. We all know is that your grace is sufficient. It is our hope that these families will choose to lean on you. For when we are at our weakest, your strength is strong. We collectively praise you that on one glorious day, when all suffering is exhausted and love has conquered, we shall walk together again. In Jesus' name, amen. At this time now, item 4A.
I move.
Entertainer motion.
I move to authorize the superintendent to negotiate a three-year agreement contract with a candidate as the district staff attorney with an annual starting salary not to exceed $175,000 with the start date to be determined.
Second.
Properly moved by Ms. Darby, second by Ms. Coates, and Ms. Green. Are there any questions? Hearing none. I'm sorry, Dr. French?
So, it's my understanding that it's normal for the board not to interview a candidate for legal counsel even though they will be working with us pretty regularly.
I think as the person who's been on the board the longest, I can say yes, absolutely.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that was.
That's typical.
Aware.
All right, any further questions? Hearing none, we ask that you please cast your vote. Dr. French?
Yes, on the last item, on the last item, I think you forgot the appointments.
Okay, just one second. That motion passes. Yes, thank you so much. If we can go back to item 3C. And number two, on the chairman's remark, I'd like to designate the scratch at the SEC Committee Chair and Lauren Hedrick and the Audit and Finance Committee Chair, Ms. Joyce Green, to serve as the board representatives on the Ursa III Planning Committee and having board representation on this committee as this planning is outlined so that we can stay abreast. Those two individuals I'm designating to serve on that committee. Are there any questions? All right, hearing none. We'll go to item 5A.
I have a question.
I'm sorry, Dr. French?
Is there any room for any other board members to serve or is it limited to just two board members?
Right now, there's two, but I will inquire about that.
Thank you.
I'll get back with the board, I should say. All right, item 5A.
Thank you Chairman Matt, Vice Chair Waters, board members, Dr. Postaway, and all who are watching. In the fall and winter sports season of the 2021 school year, Charleston County School District Schools combined to win a total of 10 team and individual South Carolina High School League state championships. With the help of athletics directors and coaches, the Division of Strategy and Communications produced a highlight video to honor these most deserving and talented CCSD athletic state champions. Tonight, we have the coaches of these outstanding athletic teams, outstanding athletes joining us to represent their individual and team accomplishments. Please join us now as we view the highlight video in recognition of these outstanding coaches, athletes, and programs.
In the fall and winter sports seasons of this school year, Charleston County School District Schools combined to win a total of 10 team and individual South Carolina High School League state championships. Let's start this recap of CCSD athletic success in the fall with swimming. The Longdo Girls brought home their fourth state team title in a row and sixth overall by capturing the 5A crown. The Warriors, led by coaches Cheryl Durden and Mackenzie Nash, held off Spartanburg for the championship. In addition to the team title, Gil Shaw won the 5A individual state championship in the 100-yard breaststroke with a time of 1 minute and 4.49 seconds. Eliza Baxter, Estelle Bauer, Sophie Fries, Mara Goodrich, Reagan Leach, Lily Lightfoot, Kaitlin Mason, Ellis Pitts, Hallie Sharp, and Jenna Thrift were all part of the Warriors' team state title. In the boys' swimming state championships, academic magnets Kyle Hurtwig won the 50-yard freestyle 3A title with a time of 22.10 seconds. He was also a runner-up in two additional events. Next sport, cross-country. The James Island Charter High School girls' cross-country team won the 4A state championship meet, edging out Hilton Head by one point. This was the second state title for the JICHS girls' cross-country program, the first since 2012. A runner from James Island also won the individual 4A state title. Hannah Vroon finished first with a time of 18 minutes, 25.39 seconds. This is the first time James Island won both the girls' cross-country team and individual state titles in the same year, and Vroon is the first student athlete to win an individual girls' cross-country state championship in school history. Julia Beebe, Amelia Carson, Anna Sophia Cruz, MK Huddleston, Carlisle Miller, Anna Capace, Avery Belk, Kira Borg, and Sierra Wiggins are all on the varsity roster. Dave Lee is the program's head coach. The assistants are Joe Eschelman, Ed Carson, and Kelly Kimble. Now to girls' tennis. Lucy Beckham High School, in its first year of existence, won the 4A title with a 5-1 victory over Greenville in the state finals. The Bengals finished the year with a 21-1 overall record. Two days after Beckham won the team championship, Piper Charney added to the Bengals' impressive year by winning the 5A, 4A individual state championship. Charney ended the season with a 17-1 mark. The team is led by head coach Liesl Kotz, and the rest of the varsity tennis players are Ella DeFord, Perrin Rogers, Annie Wilborn, Kaya Reader, Lila Small, Kayla Fergus, Lyth Myers, Kate Daniel, Mackie Black, Liliana Icafano, Kaya Hamel, Abby Jones, and Eli Gitter. Moving to volleyball, Wando High School won their first state crown since 2015 and fourth state title overall in program history by knocking off TL Hannah in a come-from-behind, five-set victory in the 5A championship. Hastings Witt led the Warriors with 11 kills in the finals. Emma Sanders and Hannah Tagami each added 10 kills. Ava McCarthy made 53 assists and Chanley Thompson recorded 28 defensive digs. The Warriors finished the year in what is head coach Alexis Glover's 34th season in charge of the program with a 20-1 record. The rest of the roster includes Ansley Albrecht, Reese Campbell, Taylor Fairhall, Ariana Fisher, Lauren Garrett, Kate Renowski, Ella Hudok, Emily King, Grayson Lutz, Taylor Martle, Ellie Middleton, Emma Sanders, Emily Stradavent, Brenn Whitehair, and McKinley Wing. Joining Glover on the coaching staff are Jenna Marie Leskey-Aul, Cole Condon, Amelia Dolly, and Tracy Carper. Time to switch to the winter sports season and basketball. The Military Magnet Academy girls made history with their first-ever state title. The Eagles got past Southside Christian in the 1A state championship game 54-49. Not only was this their first-ever state title, but it is also the school's first-ever team-state crown in a girl's sport. Chasman Bradley led MMA with 18 points in the title game. Rakea Jakes put up 12 points, and Kalen Davis added 10. The Eagles won every single playoff game on the road this year. Also on the roster for Military Magnet, Jetea Brown, Talim Farrell, Amani Price, Destiny Pugh, Satoya Martin, Jada Davis, Denari Williams, Morgan Richardson, Sabri Mitchell, and Dejamari Pugh. The Eagles practiced and played in masks the whole season and maintained a solid 3.7 team-grade point average. MMA, guided by head coach Major Nathaniel Taylor Jr., finished the year with a 10-3 record. Doug Cooper and Courtney Reed served as assistant coaches. And finally, in wrestling, North Charleston High School's Joseph Lawson completed a perfect 8-0 season with the 3A state championship in the 195-pound weight class. He defeated Kyle Decker of Gilbert by major decision 13-4 in the final round to capture his second straight state title. Lawson won the 2A 195-pound championship last year as well.
You've gone in and just grab applause to all of our championship athletes. Thank you. Our next special recognition goes to Academic Magnet High School. In 2019, they were recognized as the number-one high school in the nation by U.S. News &amp; World Report. They received that same recognition in 2020 and 2021. This year, in 2020, 2021, the school placed second in the nation according to the U.S. News rankings. Tonight, we would like to honor Academic Magnet High School students, staff, and families for the remarkable accomplishment of placing at the top of the national rankings for three consecutive years. Please join me in giving a round of applause to the Academic Magnet High School family, its leader, Ms. Catherine Spencer, and all who are watching with us this evening. Let's congratulate them. And our final recognition this evening goes to Academic Magnet High School senior Lilly Lassiter and her family. Lilly was recently named one of two U.S. United States Presidential Scholars in the state of South Carolina, placing her among only 100 other high school students in the nation to receive this honor. This award is considered one of the nation's highest awards for students. With this recognition, Lilly joins the 57th class of U.S. Presidential Scholars and is the second Academic Magnet High the second Academic Magnet High School in four years to earn this prestigious award. Help me in congratulating Lily this evening. She plans to attend Yale in the fall. Thank you, Reverend Mac. That concludes tonight's special recognition.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Taylor, and congratulations again to Lily Lassiter and to the Academic Magnet High School. Job well done. At this time now, we'll have public comments. Ms. Waters?
Thank you, Reverend Mac. We did not have any in-person public comments submitted or signed up today, but we do have some online. I will read them aloud per policy. The first comment is from Lindsay Anthony. "We, as a community, are asking for you to please reconsider the mask ordinance for our children. Allowed parents to make decisions for our children. We have that right as guardians, mothers, fathers, et cetera." Thank you. I will also note that many of these are pertaining to an issue that has already been addressed. Nevertheless, I'll read, but just know that they may feel like they're a little bit outdated, but I think they feel worthy of being read aloud. Hervana Petanato submitted, "To whom it may concern, I am writing to you today as a concerned parent regarding the mask mandates in schools. I have spoken to many parents about this subject, and I'm wondering why the mandates still exist. This has gone on too long now, and I'm concerned that this will never end the overreach of government. The teachers for the Charleston County School District have had the option to vaccinate, and the cases for children infecting one another are very low. I'm beginning to wonder if you have the best interest of our children in your decision-making, or if the government is the one you are answering to. Governor McMaster has stated that the parents have the right to make the choice whether they would like their children to wear masks or not in schools. I have yet to see a study that even states that masks do not work. If they worked, would we not all be wearing the same masks? Why is it that there are cloth masks and scarves and surgical masks, and that they are made of all different types of materials? On the contrary, I've seen plenty of studies that show particles pass through the mask. A virus is even smaller than a particle and doesn't stop anyone from contracting COVID. This is child abuse, and I want to see some sort of common sense on the mandates. I'm hoping you're not making your decisions by who your donors are and not from the people you are supposed to represent. I would be very disturbed, would be very disturbed to know that you all are taking direction from MUSD and DEHEC for your own personal interests and not the sake of our children. Dr. Edwards Zimmer from DEHEC has stated that the school-aged children rarely get a severe case of COVID-19, but in the same sentence, kids have died from the virus. How are both of these statements true? How do you make these statements without the evidence to show the public? I believe that kids rarely contracted, and if they do... The following comments are all submitted from the same person, Ms. Sarah McDonald, so I will read them all. "Please take the masks off our children in school." Second comment, "CDC risk of coronavirus transmission outdoors greatly exaggerated. Bombshell report finds..." And then there's a hyperlink to a Fox News article. Third comment, "Take the masks off. Enough is enough." Fourth comment, "This is absolutely absurd. Take the masks off our children." Fifth comment, "I just received a call from the Charleston County School District, and the DEHEC form is the correct one. My student will not be attending school in a mask tomorrow, as you have one on file. The appropriate consent form. I will have him bring extra copies of the signed form in case anyone has any questions." Sixth comment, "8th graders need an in-person graduation with their family in attendance. Who makes this happen now that the mask BS is gone and the CDC magically announced that being indoors without a mask is okay?" I will not read the seventh comment because it contains some information that is not allowed based on the FERPA guidance. The eighth comment, "Good afternoon. Per the new CDC guidelines, indoor maskless gatherings are acceptable. My son is an 8th grader at Camperwell Middle. Please help to change the 8th grade graduates' ceremony." And they often give these teachers and administrators to use the comments they were born with. The next comment is from Suzanne Richardson. "CCSD Board of Trustees, who are critical impact on whether students be allowed to attend school without a mask. As we have seen millions of times over, masks are effective at slowing the transmission of COVID through source containment. Research studies have also shown that masks, except surgical and N95 masks, are not particularly effective at preventing transmission when an unmasked COVID-positive person is around others who are masked. The governor's waiver creates the potential for unmasked students to pose a threat to masked students without parental consent. Those students, including my own, are not being given the options to opt out of being around an unmasked student. Governor McMaster has effectively thrown out the last 14 months of research. As a nurse, I find this egregious and irresponsible. I do not want my children in the same room as other unmasked children. We have foregone family holidays, vacations, a baptism, and a funeral to avoid being around crowds and/or unmasked individuals. Please don't let all that caution and adherence to CDC guidelines be in vain. If some are allowed to opt out, what about those of us who do not want their children near unmasked individuals? How do we opt out? In a school where everything has been turned upside down, please let us finish out the year. 26 school days left without making any major changes. We are so close. I appreciate your consideration, and do not envy the very slippery slope you have been navigating. May your single-minded focus on the, be on the social, emotional, mental, and physical safety of our children guide your decisions. Many blessings to you, Suzanne Richardson." The second statement, "CCSD Board of Trustees, please craft a plan for students to opt out of in-person school due to the increased health risk close contact to unmasked individuals' places on them. We need to feel like our children are safe at school, and when policies threaten their safety, we need a way to opt out of those threatening situations." The next comment is from Betsy Frazier. "Hello, Superintendent Postaway and CCSD Board Members. I am writing this email as a concerned parent and healthcare professional in Charleston County. I implore you to uphold the mask mandate in our schools to keep not only our children, but also our teachers and administrators safe. Doing anything else will go against both CDC and DEHEC regulations. Unfortunately, our governor is making it hard for all of us to do our jobs. Please continue to require masks so our teachers and school administrators can focus on what they should be focusing on, and that is teaching our kids. We only have a few weeks left before the summer. We do not need parents pitted against parents and faculty at this point. Please stay the course, at least until the end of the year. I'm happy to discuss my concerns further, should anyone wish to do so. Kindly, Betsy Frazier from Compass Vision Care LLC." The next comment is from Steph Limkey. "There is more than a month to do what is right for these graduates and give family members a chance to make plans to have more than three family members attend one of the most important events of their lives. These poor kids have had both of their proms canceled on them, homecoming dances, typical chop house celebrations at Friday night football games. We are fighting to give them a send-off that they deserve. There is way over 50% capacity for Wando students in attendance for in-person class in an indoor facility. However, the administration is limiting the tickets for their graduations to 20% capacity at the outdoor stadium. This is absolute lunacy. Many parents have emailed the principal expressing the need for more than three tickets per student, and she is ignoring our request for sending back cookie cutter response, and we have had it. We want to be heard. We have started a petition that is taking off, and in less than 24 hours, have quickly received 100 signatures. At two days, it was up to over 300. There are many powerful comments in favor of doing the right things for these kids. Please take a minute to read them and carefully consider where we are coming from. Enough is enough. There are so many on this email, and hope that someone wants to step up and help us. Please." The link to the petition is included. "Thank you in advance for your consideration, Steph Limkey, proud mother of Wando Senior." Who is currently writing? I don't know that I can read that. Patrick Lane is the next commenter. "Reading, writing, and arithmetic are the foundation of our education system in the United States. Our children cannot read or write in person. That means they cannot read the original U.S. Constitution, and they cannot sign their name. This is a reflection of the intelligence and the guidance of our board. This is unacceptable. Our children need to be intelligent and have a personal signature. The despatriotic programs that are infiltrating our country, such as illuminating the pledge of allegiance in our schools, is unacceptable. What is needed to implement these and other patriotic programs into the curriculum..." Oh, what is need? That was a question. "Respectfully, Patrick Lane." The next comment is from Jody Longo. "There are not enough IEP teachers. All grades, middle to elementary, can benefit from assistant teachers, too, to prevent our kids from falling behind. I want to say that over and over and over. An IEP teacher cannot make appropriate progress with a student when they have a student assignment of 10-plus students. It's unrealistic. Our kids are not getting the support they need without more IEP and assistant teachers in higher grades." Thank you. That concludes the public comments. I will state that, or request, that when you all submit public comments online, you do not include personal information. We did have to eliminate our "opt not to read," sorry, we did not opt not, we could not read several of the comments due to FERPA law. And as I was reading, I was trying to skip over. So just please do take care to remember not to include personal details about our faculty or about your children, because we want to keep them protected. Thank you.
Okay, that ends our public comments. Superintendent's report, Dr. Postaway?
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. My comments will be brief tonight, primarily wanting to update you on the COVID-19 report that we've been giving every two weeks since last summer. You'll see the recent disease activity by county shows Charleston overall rated low. Our incident rate for 100,000 is still slightly over where it needs to be, but overall, we're rated low. If we move on to the next slide, we see more positive news. Our COVID-positive cases by week is headed in a great direction for our faculty. We have no adults in our system, no personnel who've experienced positive COVID cases in the past week. We have, however, realized a gain in positive cases among students. It's not a significant gain, but it is a gain, and we have more students being quarantined now because if a positive student isn't wearing a mask and the students around that student don't have masks on, then they are required to quarantine, so we have more students in quarantine. Moving on to the next page, the next slide, we have a lot of questions about why our board didn't drop the mask mandate entirely, or why the board allowed any students to come to school without masks. So we want to emphasize that the board's policy ADD, which requires face masks and other risk mitigation strategies, is still strongly in place. The legislature in April passed, and the governor signed, the South Carolina COVID Liability Immunity Act. We talked about this last time, the fact that the school district is protected from reasonable risk and expense of lawsuits related to alleged damage from COVID that people might have acquired on your school district property. But such immunity comes only if we have operated consistent with the health guidelines. The next slide says a little bit more about that, just a little more details. If the district fails to make an attempt to adhere to public health guidance, then we are not covered. So we will continue through the end of this school year to observe all of the guidelines, and they have been confusing a little bit. The CDC guidance came out, it sounded as though CDC was saying that masks were no longer required indoors. They were not, however, saying that that was the case for public schools, so it took them a day or two to reissue clarification that they are recommending masks for indoors events in schools, on school property. Actually, I think the recommendation is masks on school property, period. And with that, I'll toss it over to Jeff, who's going to cover some of the information that people are really anxious to hear about.
Thank you, Dr. Postaway. So three topics here to cover with the board tonight: student vaccinations, graduations, and mask-wearing. The student vaccination program with our nurses at the forefront is really continuing to progress well. We completed seven schools last week, providing 556-second doses. We had two schools left today. That moves us into the 12-year-olds and above. We've set up seven different regional sites for that. That'll begin again tomorrow, so we're very anxious to continue to roll out the vaccination for our younger students. And that vaccination program will also be an offer for family members as well. We would expect that a lot of students that age would be coming with their parents after school, and so we'll make sure that there's an opportunity for them to be vaccinated as well at our schools with higher Spanish-speaking numbers. We'll look at having an interpreter there as well to talk about the vaccination program and what benefits it offers. From a graduation perspective, we've been spending a lot of time working through the details and providing as much possible space in our stadiums as possible. Our current plan is to provide a minimum of six guests per graduate. Most ceremonies will have the six-foot spacing. In fact, nine of the 12 schools will be able to maintain six-foot spacing. The remaining three schools will be somewhere between three and six foot, and we will, for the smaller schools, increase the number from six to a higher number to provide them a greater opportunity if the space is available in the venue that they've chosen. From a mask-wearing perspective, as Dr. Postaway mentioned, we continue to do two things. Number one, maintain the CDC guidance, which is on the following slide, while also supporting the opt-out waiver that was signed on the governor's order, and we've received more than 5,000 of those so far, and that was as of last Friday. Again, the next slide simply covers the details of the CDC guidance that continues to require face masks in schools.
And we get to the final slide, and we simply wanted to give you a preview of some of the information that will be coming to you at the June committee, the whole meeting. That's the last meeting of this fiscal year, and of course, this school year. So at the committee, the whole meeting in June, we have some progress reports due. The first thing we want to report on is the thing that has absorbed most of our time and attention this year, and that is operating schools safely in person from day one for the children of Charleston County, as well as offering temporary remote and the opportunity to move back and forth between the two options at designated times. And then the virtual school, which is a total virtual school that was expanded to include students in all grades this year. So that's really what took most of our time and attention this year. We also will share the data that we may have ready to share by the first committee, by the committee, the whole meeting in June. We received a notification today, I believe, that the State Department is not, the State Department, South Carolina Department of Education, is not going to allow us to share summary data from their achievement test this year. So if an individual child took the test, we're permitted to share that child's results with the parent. Certainly, a teacher can look at results for students in their classroom, but we can't, we aren't permitted to provide summary results saying, "Across Charleston County, students appear to perform in this manner," or "In a specific school, students appear to perform in this manner," and that is because of the volatility in the way the tests are administered and when and under what conditions students take the tests. So we've had, if students were learning virtually or in temporary remote, the only way they are permitted to take the state test is if they come to school in person. Many parents didn't want their children to come to school in person, and we have had some children who were attending in person, but once their classmates were permitted to take their masks off, they're no longer attending in person. So that has created a lot of uncertainty in the testing program. As a result, the experts at the State Department of Education have said that the results simply can't be compared, they're not valid or reliable for comparison purposes. So that was a long-winded explanation to say that we will bring you whatever we can. Certainly, we, the MAP data are different. We own the MAP data as a district, so we can share with you what we think we see in terms of the data that we have available. And then a third area that we will talk about is the follow-up on the mission-critical goals that were to be implemented this year, and they're not all listed here. I listed some of them that would fit on this slide. There were a few other mission-critical goals that we will report on in June. For the most part, they're goals that were not addressed. An example would be there was a committee to investigate whether or not it would make sense to create a district-wide Montessori, middle, and high school. And the committee concluded that that wasn't feasible at the time, but we didn't actually report back to the board, give that final analysis and recommended action. So we'll tie up those loose ends this year. And I want to thank the board member who reminded us that there were some leftover mission-critical items that didn't get addressed, just giving you an example of one of them. And then finally, the board established your goals and priorities for the next 18 months. And the first quarterly report is due in June. So we will get that report to you. We're trying to develop a format that can be used every single time you get a quarterly report so it looks the same and you can tell what progress has been made on a particular goal. There's some strategies for that goal from quarter to quarter. So that concludes the superintendent's report tonight, Reverend Matt. It was our intention to keep it short.
Okay, are there any questions in the superintendent's report? Dr. French.
I just have one question. I was confused. You said that graduation ceremonies, each student will get six tickets, a minimum of or maximum of? Could you explain?
So I said a minimum of six tickets because there will be some schools that will have more than six tickets if the spacing exists based on the number of graduates. So essentially, the smaller high schools that are in the largest venues will have as many seats as we can allow them to have.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, there's waters.
Dr. Postaway, how reliable is the MAP projection to SC Ready?
There are probably staff members who can answer that better than I. So we'll get that data to you in the board brief. But I will tell you, four years ago, when the State Department of Education studied the available formative test, the test that tests growth, there were two contenders, and MAP was the more reliable of the two with an 80% correlation between student score on MAP and their likely subsequent score on SC Ready.
Awesome. Thank you.
Dr. Fraser.
Yes. What is the protocol for board members' attendance at graduations?
We simply asked you, I believe, that information. If it hasn't gone out, we'll send it. We'll send it. If it has.
It has.
I believe it's gone out. We'll send it again to make certain that you know. The protocol is we give you a list of all the graduation locations, dates, and times, and you let us know if you plan to go so that a seat can be available for you. In ordinary years, every board member who wants to attend any graduation is provided for. There's usually a seat reserved for that board member. This year, we want to make sure that we have accounts so that there is a seat set aside for you at the appropriate location because it isn't the normal ceremony with the seats on the desk. Does that make sense?
Sure.
We'll resend the information. Thank you.
All right, any further?
I have a quick question. Dr. Postaway, you said the MAP testing. You said that one was the one that we kind of lean more towards as being more reliable?
Yes, ma'am. This year, since we can't report the results on SC Ready in summary information for an entire school, we will report MAP. And so for this year, MAP will be what we may have. And FastBridge for the younger students. Thank you, Karen. But we won't be able to report SC Ready this year. I didn't mean to imply that one is more reliable than the other. It's just that one will be available this year. The MAP will be available this year to report to the board, but the SC Ready and other South Carolina developed tests will not. Does that make sense?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Yes.
Okay, any further questions? Hearing none. Item 8A. Ms. Belcher.
Yes, sir. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. John Cobb, the Executive Director on Learning Services, to talk through an update on our summer enrichment camps that we're offering this summer.
Okay.
Good evening, Reverend Matt, members of the board, Dr. Prepp, Dr. Postaway. We are excited to share with you the K-12 Summer Enrichment Camp opportunities that we are planning for scholars. The information on the next nine slides is fluid, and we're still making finer, minor adjustments to ensure that this summer will be an engaging and meaningful one for all of our students who are participating. I have with me this evening Ms. Sherri Wass, Assistant Principal of Meminger Elementary, Ms. Wallens, District Instructional Specialist, and Mr. Kaufner, one of our wonderful middle school teachers. Next, Ms. Wass. Next slide, please.
So didn't you leave the slide before? That's okay. So these folks that use the names that Mr. Cobb shared on the first slide are the folks that had the opportunity and the pleasure of being a part of this expansive program for our students this summer. The planning work began in mid-January of 2021. The team began discussions to determine which students would be served, and we used the Department of Assessment and Evaluation to assist with that. As the work developed, the team expanded to ensure that our plans and instructional strategies were intentional and deliverable. This process was truly collaborative, and the work will continue to be refined, as Mr. Cobb mentioned, until mid-June. Teachers selected to serve in this were from schools from across the district and have consistently shown evidence of increasing student growth and achievement.
Next slide. When we were initially planning for summer enrichment camps, we wanted to be thoughtful in the selection of the cohort of students who would most benefit from this type of intensive literacy and numeracy support. We wanted to consider a number of factors, such as assessment scores like FastBridge for our K-1 students and SC Ready projections for our reading and math, MAP assessments for our 2 through 8 students, attendance indicators, as well as other at-risk factors identified by our schools and teachers. Next slide. We'll have eight sites across the school district, including St. James CMT for elementary schools, Ginny Moore, Meminger, Stoner Park, North Charleston Creative Arts, Heinhurst Lands, and EB Ellington. EB Ellington and St. James CMT will be K-8 sites. And each site will have a program coordinator, a lead teacher, a special education lead teacher, a counselor, and a team of special education teachers that will push in to support students with special needs so that we can make sure that all students are served well. Each site will also be staffed with a front office person that is going to be funded and focusing on summer enrichment camp and helping out with our families. Each year, we're required to offer summer reading camp to our third graders who are not reading proficiently on grade level and provide them with the opportunity to attend summer reading camp. This year, we're expanding the summer reading camp model to a K-8 offering. We have a time requirement of 96 hours for Read to Succeed camp, and with the 17 days of instruction for students from 8 o'clock until 2 o'clock, we're exceeding the 96-hour requirement. These camps will use the Read to Succeed guidelines, including a class ratio of 15 to 1 or lower.
Thank you. And up here, you will see displayed, the next slide, please. Thank you. Up here, you will see displayed the elementary curriculum, and we're going to highlight some of these things. In selecting texts, we chose texts that align and build knowledge across Bridges STEM Unit. So all students will be using the curriculum Bridges Unit 8, which is the adopted curriculum for math. It is a STEM unit and covers many of the priority standards. By taking a thematic approach to the summer enrichment camp, our hope is to build deep knowledge around a topic as well as spark students' interest by making the camp fun and engaging. We use open court integrity to help solidify stations' reading skills through a whole group model and target individual student needs through focused, small-group instruction. Positive behavior interventions and supports will be used throughout camp, and social and emotional learning will be integrated throughout the day. Next slide.
This summer enrichment engaging camps have three levers. One lever is going to be a reading focus, a math focus, and engagement piece. Through the coordination of our kaleidoscope team, we will have 20 vendors and partners providing activity to our students. To name a few, we will have Temple Fit, Engage and Creative Minds, County Park, Charleston County Park and Recreation. And a special thank you go out to the Citadel. The Citadel is going to be providing their services to our students free of charge. No cost to the district.
Next slide.
As of May 14th, we currently have 610 students enrolled at seven different sites, and we also have 40 teachers. We have five sites that are 6th grade through 8th grade, and they are Lang, Camp Road, Hot Gap, North Woods, and Zucker. We have two sites that are K through 8, and they include EB Ellington and St. James CMT. Scholars will spend 8 to 12 focused on academics and 1230 to 2 focused on engagement. Middle schools will have the same supports as elementary sites, including special education support, transportation, and meals. Next slide, please. Planning for the middle grades curriculum, it started months ago and has been developed completely by teachers. We broke into two different teams, one ELA team and one math team. We thought it was very important for each middle school scholar to have two ELA lessons a day and two math lessons a day. In math, we planned 17 daily lessons that are focused on priority standards and the latest benchmark data. The second math lesson will use an intervention program and be taught in small groups. ELA will use novel studies and grade-level texts to teach the priority standards, and the second ELA lesson will focus on small groups. To support PBIS and social and emotional learning, the day will start with a morning motivation period, and we are partnering with engagement partners. Next slide, please. The middle grades will be served by Engage and Creative Minds, using a variety of professional local artists and CCSD staff to deliver drumming, dance, theater, and STEM activities. University instructors, more commonly known as EPIC, will engage our middle school scholars in a space exploration unit with a theme "Out of This World." At the conclusion, a 25-by-25-foot map of Mars and the Moon will become property of the host sites. Next slide.
This final slide is a list of all of the district-sponsored summer enrichment opportunities. 1,065 high school students will have the opportunity to participate in credit recovery and a few CTE sessions. Our migrant camp will host approximately 50 students at EB Ellington. I want to say thank you to our team that's here and the individuals who have done an awesome job of planning. I also want you to know as a board, this was a district-wide plan. We got information from Food Services, from Department of Strategy and Communication, HR Facilities, Security Department, our Nursing Department, Title I Office, and last but most important, Transportation. They all participated to help us get this program all together. Thank you to all. And, Mr. Matt, this is our conclusion. And are there any questions?
Okay, the only question I have is that was there a selected number of students chosen to participate? Or was there at-large amount offered to the different schools? How was the numbers or the invite extended?
Our invite went out to a party of 5,500 kids, students, K-8. And the ones who responded, we were accepting them as they respond.
Okay. And as of May 14th, so about half, almost half of those have responded?
Yes. K-8, we're looking at about 3,200 students, less the number of grownups. 3,200 students. And yes. So we're looking at about a 57% acceptance rate.
Okay. At some point, because this is very massive and very critical in trying to get the maximum number of kids into the program. So at some point, those 5,500 kids that did not, or the extras that did not apply, will it be extended beyond that to others so that we can get to the maximum number of kids that we can house during this summer program?
Given the time that we have, we were trying to make sure we concentrated on the one that definitely wanted to be. But if there are other students and we have time, we would probably entertain it.
And just to add, Reverend Matt, one of our challenges, I think, from last year is that we did not have a lot of students who actually showed up at the end. And of course, there was a lot of ambiguity about whether it was going to be in person or virtual. This is the largest number of students we've ever had enrolled in a summer program. Over 1,000 students at the high school at the credit recovery stage, 600-plus students at the middle school level, and close to 2,500 students at the elementary level through our program. Some schools are also offering school-specific Title I programs, but the kids that are coming are the kids that were significantly behind grade level or missing assignments or were not regularly signing on. So Dr. Williams has led a teacher, I'm sorry, a student recruitment effort at the middle school level to bring in more kids. And now that we're starting to match teachers with classes of children, they're cultivating those children to make sure that they actually show up. We are actually at or close to capacity. We anticipated this program being small, given it was a shorter summer. I'm pleased to say that it will not be small. We are very close to our breaking point in terms of what we can serve. So I appreciate your point of wanting to accommodate more students. I think at this point, particularly for the elementary, we're close to what we can be.
Can I jump in and say something, please?
Just one second. Close as to being, reaching the 5,500 or close as not expanding beyond 5,500?
Because in terms of like numbers of staff that we have that we can actually serve the students as well as the match between space and staff and operations.
Okay. All right. I may have some questions later. Ms. Coakley?
I just wanted to say, I guess, thank you right there for the clarity, but the way you kind of chimed in there just now bothered me, the way you cut him off. I just wanted to say that you said that he was ambiguous in the recruitment process. So who is more ambiguous in the hiring process? Also, how was the recruitment process put out there? And how that these 5,500 people are the ones that didn't get attached? How did they know? And how would they know in the future?
I caught the last question, ma'am. I'm not sure I caught the earlier, so please repeat yourself if I don't answer it. The elementary school students, we had a math, our initial deadline, we had many less students at that point who had expressed interest in applying. Do you remember the number, Mr. Cobb?
Didn't want to get to the initial deadline. Offhand, I don't remember.
So it's 800 students. And due to the hard work of the teachers, parent advocates, and principals of the elementary schools, since the due date, that 800 number has been raised to the 3,200 number for elementary, K-5. Okay, sorry. Thank you, ma'am.
Okay.
Thank you.
I know I did not answer all of her questions, Reverend Mac, if there are.
Is there another component to your question, Ms. Coakley, that wasn't answered?
No, ma'am, not a question. It was just the way that she kind of jumped in when he was already talking to give the clarification. Just a slight pardon me with the clarification would have done. But that's all I was saying.
No worries, Dr. Fraser.
Yeah. And let me just piggyback on that because we've had this issue before that we have to be very respectful when people give their presentation because everyone has something to offer, and they put a lot of hard work into trying to identify these students. And I just want to applaud you all for the hard work. And I have one question, and I want to direct it to the people who actually was involved in the process. And I don't see the number of schools that are participating. And how did you go about reaching those students who we have already identified as not being engaged and really, really need to be involved in a summer program?
We have students represented from the majority of our elementary and our middle schools. So all students who met the threshold using the data that we used were invited. We extended invitation, like Ms. Belcher said, to about 5,400, 5,500 students. And then at the school level, we really leaned into the schools and asked them to help us recruit. And so those were done through, you know, sending fires home with invitations, you know, addressed to the families and to the students directly, trying to increase, you know, that personal connection, like you're invited, come join us for camp. And then also, whenever we didn't hear from those families, student people at the school actually reached out in a like personal connection through phone calls or through emails to try to recruit students to come and join us and engage with us this summer in summer enrichment camp.
Thank you for that. Can we have a list of this?
I know that at Meminger, we met families because oftentimes, you know, when you come home and you have that bookbag, there are a lot of things in there to go through and root through, and parents are very busy. So we had clipboards, and we accosted you in the carpool line or when you were dropping something on. something off, if your student had been invited, we just kept them on clipboards in the front office, and I think a lot of schools, at least at the elementary level, worked that way, to make it a personal connection.
It was really a, it was really a district-wide effort with Presley and everybody really reaching out to families and really making those connections to get...
Great, wonderful. And do you have a list that we could get of those schools who are participating, those sites?
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to have a list of those.
We can, we can send you the feeder pattern, so you can actually see which schools are feeding into our Summer Enrichment Camp site.
Thank you.
So that you can see exactly like where Hershey students are going, where Jenny Moore students are going.
Awesome.
I'd like that, too.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, Ms. Coates?
We'll send it to everyone.
So, I know that, is this S R two, this are S R two funds, right?
We, I'm going to go over that in the next presentation.
On your next presentation, but this is S R two.
That's right, we may have some that we allocate, that's a final decision, depending on where we are in S R one, ma'am, but the assumption is that the majority of it will be S R two, correct?
So we do have some S R ones left over?
I think we're, I will defer.
Are we rolling? Do we think we have S R one left over, just yes or no, that's not very critical?
Well, we have S R one funds that have not been expended.
Thank you. Spoken like a true CFO, there is no such word as leftover. So, the presentation you're giving is the S R two, and then of course, Fund Three Fifty Seven, which is the Read to Succeed Act money given to us by the state. Is the six point six million dollar total, or is it six point six plus the Read to Succeed money?
It's six point six plus Read to Succeed, it's like a shared cost, part of it's going to be played by Read to Succeed.
But that's the total.
Right, exactly. So, go ahead.
I'm sorry, but, so that's, I really just wanted to know, so that's fine, because I trust you, Mr. Cobb, but one of the questions that I have is, and I think the Read to Succeed law was very much relaxed at the end, but why is this optional? Is kind of the question, I guess, I could say, why is participation voluntary, particularly when these are identified students, and you may not be allowed to force them, that could well be your answer, but forty-three percent of the students who need interventions to get on grade level are going to show up in August not on grade level for not having attended these schools, is almost spending this money and then still having to do the same things next year, and that worries me, because I don't think you can ignore the kids next year when they show up, but you have just said forty-three percent are going to show up not ready, because they're not attending this camp, and they've been identified. So, I guess I'm asking you, why can't we make them come, or what is the plan for the other forty-three percent that are going to show up behind, that you know are going to be there?
And right now, with looking at that, we're going to have to put other plans in as the year begins, because right now, we are going to address the ones that who want to come, and quite, to be quite open and frank with you as a board, is some of the parents back out once the mask came off, some of them say, you know, I'm not going to send my kids.
These will be, these are not mandatory mask programs, and that created...
Well, we are going to be following the protocol of the district when it comes to this.
Okay. And I guess, so then the last thing was, and not now, because I'm sure we're going to run out of time, but you mentioned that Title One programs in individual schools, I thought I heard you say that, Ms. Belcher, that that's kind of parallel to this, so it may be in fact more than these kids being served, you're serving this pot, but there are other kids are going to get this kind of intervention in another format?
We, not necessarily, but some schools decided that they, as part of their Title One plan, they had a summer program, which may have been to address a different issue, so it may have been about social, emotional health, or building relationships or something different. Those are still going on. We work very hard to encourage schools to use our program, so we wouldn't be recruiting from each other, if that makes sense.
Absolutely, why I'm asking, how are we running two parallel programs?
But we have a few modest programs that were already in place that we did not, we deferred to the principal to allow them to continue those programs.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions?
I just have a comment. I just want to say thank you, this is phenomenal, it's a tight summer, I know that it's really difficult to hire and engage kids, so bravo to you and your team for everything that you put into this.
Thank you very much, thank you.
Yeah, I just want to make sure, to clarify, and sort of a follow-up on Reverend Mack's question, so you have, you had recruited fifty-five hundred students that you identified, and then you'd got a lot higher response than you expected, and you really actually never were thinking that you could accommodate all fifty-five hundred students, is that correct?
That's correct, because in the past, if like a selection pipeline, we invite, and then a smaller number of folks register, and then a smaller number of folks actually attend. We are, through, I think, a lot of proactive efforts, again, initiated by Dr. Williams and his team at the middle school level, John Cobb and the elementary school team, and the principals in particular, really worked their faculty to get the students who most needed it to come. That's why our numbers are relatively historically high across the grade levels, and right now, our challenge is finding sufficient faculty to staff the program. And again, also a credit to, I don't want to ignore the high school, we have over a thousand students in credit recovery, typically we charge for those programs, those programs are going to be happening this summer without charge to students, and we'll allow them to have busing and meals as well, where appropriate. So this is the most expansive summer school program we've offered to date.
Okay, and then the other question is, you, I think you answered in the email, but I just wanted to let other board members know, it sounded like what you told me earlier today is that all of these enrichment programs are going to be offered at all of the different locations, and that they're not going to be, there's not going to be a fee for these programs, that they'll be part of the day.
That's right, there's no fee for the programs, but not all are offered at every single site because of their own capacity in order to serve all the students, where we needed multiple vendors and multiple options, so they're offered at some program or programs throughout the system, and those are all of our partners.
So I just want to say to the committee, I just want to be clear, that I do appreciate all of the work that you have done to put into putting together this, this program. I was alluding, Ms. Belcher, to the fact of trying to maximize as many students as we can, just going back to what Ms. Coates was trying to address earlier, as many students as we can get into this program early on, will be able to help reduce that number on returning back in August of kids that are not readily prepared. I think it's just crucial and critical, but I'm hearing also in the discussion that there is a possibility of a lack of certified teachers maybe, or teachers to be able to house the program to some degree, if it is...
Yes, I mean, it's part of our challenge was in recruiting faculty, it's a shorter summer than it has been historically, because we're ending later in the year, and then we're starting at our typical time, and as you know, our teachers and many of our faculty and staff are very tired after a year where they've had to do dual modalities and constant change, so we really did need to incent faculty members to work in the summer program, and I'm about to go over some of those incentives that we have in place, but that is a limiting factor on the number of students we can serve. And as I think folks know, we can't require participation, even Read to Succeed, which is a requirement at the state level for us, if a third grader is at risk of failure or at risk of not being able to read, we have to offer that program, but parents can still opt not to send their children to that program, and that is the way the system is set up right now.
Okay, all right. All right, thank you so much. All right, you want to go into item eight B, Ms. Belcher?
I do. Last, last board meeting, Dr. Pulsoit gave a high-level update on the monies that are available over the next few years through S R funds. At that time, I believe the board said, some of this work has to be planned now for next year, even as we know we simultaneously want to have a meaningful and authentic community engagement effort to make sure that we're spending these monies wisely and really changing the life trajectory of many students in our system. What we wanted to make sure we did is give an update on where we do believe we have some allocations for S R funding to already in place, and once we submit the proposal, these will be key components of that proposal to the state for approval. We expect we'll probably have to submit an initial proposal and then amend it as we get more input from the community and other stakeholders across the system. So at this point, this is preliminary, and wanted to make sure I sort of stress that. Going to the next slide, Maggie, thank you. At the high level, specific to the COVID recovery, we know, as we just talked about, that there are gaps in terms of academic and social, emotional needs. Our high-level priorities in terms of COVID recovery, obviously to open schools safely, right now, we still do have health and safety protocols in place, and we have to maintain those going into next year at this point in time. We have to have a continued focus on making sure that we're really improving the instructional core and the mission-critical work that was begun by this board. Part of what we believe is that our challenge is that our tier-one instruction, or traditional classroom instruction, and math and English language arts is not as strong as it needs to be, so that is a continued major investment. As you know, we have a new math curriculum, we are beginning to pilot next year a new ELA curriculum, we're focusing on the acceleration schools, and we're thinking about how best to expand our early childhood programs, like Mary Ford that presented last week, last board meeting. The other thing we're doing is system-level interventions to catch students up, one of those was the summer program that we just talked about, ensuring that we have sufficient mental health and social, emotional supports to help our community recover, and then we're offering options at the school level to really target interventions based on school-level data. So that's our general approach at this point in time to COVID recovery. Maggie, if you would do the next slide, thank you. So when we talk about estimated S R investments in some of those areas, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Simmons on the first point.
Good evening, Reverend Mack, Mrs. Waters, esteemed board members, Dr. Pulsoit, and our viewing audience. We want to talk a little bit about what we believe to be priorities moving forward as it relates to our S R funding. So, for this current school year, even more so than others, we knew it was important to fortify our schools in terms of positions and staffing. The same holds true for this upcoming year, so we are projecting that about an additional fifty-nine FTEs, that those are full-time employees, will be allocated to schools for the upcoming year, so that we can continue to adhere to our COVID capacity measures, equaling approximately four point two million dollars. We believe that shoring up schools in this manner will allow us to do a few things, minimizing, hopefully eliminating teachers' teaching in dual modes that you heard about a few moments ago, reducing the need to deploy our central staff members to schools, and we believe this projected revenue will help us, for the most part, for one year, fortify and solidify what we're doing in terms of recovery and rebounding from this pandemic and COVID. Ms. Bell, if you want to speak to the Virtual Academy?
Certainly, as the board knows, we've entered into a partnership with the Low Country Virtual Academy, with, right now, we have a little under four hundred students anticipated in that. Our placeholder in the budget is one point three million, which is at thirty-two hundred per pupil. Now that may go down as we see the numbers of students that are enrolling from other districts, those numbers have not been finalized of yet, but just wanted to make sure that I reminded the board that is right now slated to be part of S R two. We go to the next slide, the system-level intervention, so this is what we're trying to do across the board, one is the Summer Enrichment Program, which we just highlighted, that is all in, as said here, a six point six million or so from S R, and then an additional fund from Fund Three Five Seven, which is the Read to Succeed. The sixty, one of the things that makes this program more expensive than our summer programs in the past is that we're offering sixty dollars per hour for our classroom teachers, and we did adjust salaries for other roles to be more market competitive. Now, there are three reasons for us doing that, one is, that is the market right now in South Carolina, so other districts came out first, offering that level of a premium for summer employment, so we followed that. It is a shorter summer, as I said earlier, which makes it less attractive for teachers who wanted a break between their school year work and their summer work, so we wanted something that would make folks consider it, and honestly, we wanted to make sure we were incenting our most highly effective teachers, so that we would have a premium for those folks to teach the students who need the most support. Now, this is a one-year commitment that we're making, we anticipate that next year we'll be able to move back to more traditional recruitment methods, because it should be a traditional year and not have as many challenges as this year, but wanted to make sure you knew that that is part of the reason for the high price tag. And we are also subsidizing high school courses, typically, we do charge nominal fees for students who are taking summer course replacement or course recovery, that is not true this year, we're subsidizing all of that, and that would be S R-based funding. In addition, as I've highlighted for the board, as we talked about our recovery, we're entering into a two-year commitment with Saga Education, which is an in-person algebra and geometry tutoring program for about, for about six, four hundred students, I believe, at Stahl High School, and virtual algebra and geometry tutoring at Burke and West Ashley High School. High schools had the opportunity to opt in based on the numbers of students that traditionally are at risk of failing Algebra One or Geometry. As you may know, at the high school level, high school level algebra is a gatekeeper course, if you pass that course, you are more likely to be able to take further higher-level electives and be college and career-ready. This is, the Saga Education program is the gold standard on what they call high dosage tutoring, they have research that's been demonstrated, the students have gained between one and two point five years of math learning, and will be serving approximately six hundred kids in the first year. Our hope is we'll be able to expand that if it's working well, and continue that work on an ongoing way. On the next slide, we start to go into some of our social, emotional, and mental health S R investments. We, again, as part of the board priorities, we committed to adding sufficient mental health services to meet the need and ensure all students had access, that means additional social workers who are able to do therapy, and additional options for counseling through community-based resources. We're adding a climate coach, and we're investing in summer MTSS school team training to make sure that we're refreshing the skills at the school level on equity and, and social, emotional learning, so that we're better able to respond to student need over the course of the year. And as a reminder, we did administer that panorama survey in order to better target resources to particular schools or grade levels based on what we're seeing as student responses to the SEL survey, and then we're also planning to expand restorative practices by having more training opportunities and hopefully encouraging more schools to participate. The total investment there right now is a little less than seven hundred thousand dollars as a placeholder for the items below. And then the next slide.
All righty, great day, everyone, great day, Reverend Dr. Eric Mack, Board Chair, Vice Chair, Mrs. Courtney Waters, Board Members, Dr. Pulsoit. So thank you all for giving me an opportunity this evening to discuss the COVID recovery plans that schools were given an opportunity to submit based on gaps they've identified as a result of COVID. So the crux of all these plans was data, and what we ask schools to do with the data is to identify root causes, then once they identify the root causes, look at specific strategies they wanted to put in place to address the needs, but in addition to putting in the strategies, how they were going to implement these strategies and who would be responsible. So once we did that, we saw that plans submitted ranged from accelerated academic supports, SEL supports, and also extended learning time during the school day and outside of normal school hours. So once we got those plans, we gave them a budget, actually, that was equivalent to one point oh teacher FTE for them to make their plans and plan within that budget, and our total cost after the plans were submitted was about five point five million that you can see up on the screen. We'd like to say that we saw a lot of thought process being put into the plans that schools submitted, really thinking outside of the box on ways they could support scholars' needs, like I said, based on data.
We also anticipate having more investments for the acceleration schools, but we'll give an update on that further on as we continue, because we've been updating the board on the acceleration schools' investments in an ongoing way, but wanted to see if the board had questions about our current thinking today on S R two planning.
Hey, are there any questions on this presentation?
I have one.
Ms. Coakley?
Yes, ma'am, you stated that, like dual, I'm sorry, courses that had to be retaken, they're being offered for prorated, would this be something that kids that took dual programs, say over at Trident Tech or something, would this be something that could help them if they had to retake a course, or is it just for high school students? Excuse me, or give it for the high school classes?
Ma'am, I don't know the answer to that question, so I'll have to check unless Dr. Williams does.
If you can repeat it, Ms. Coakley, that'd be greatly appreciated, ma'am.
If I understood correctly, she said that they're offering, like, for children that had to take classes again, and that normally would have to pay for them, funds are being allocated to pay for them, is this for only high... Is this for only high school classes? Or is this something that children that took dual programs over at Trident Tech, per se, could take care of?
It's the high school credit courses, ma'am, if I understand you correctly. You're asking if we're paying for dual credit courses for them to have some type of recovery efforts? And the answer would be no, it's just for the high school credit courses that scholars may have attempted and not done well based on COVID.
Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Coates?
So I'm just, I have to say this, but I'm still concerned that we're trusting the virtual education to a company that has been in business for 68 days. I really hope that the kinks related to something like that, having those kids sign their own use agreements that, while still being in part of their homeschools, discipline plans, if you go across the districts that are using this, there seems to be some potential issues that come up again that shouldn't take the focus away from the learning. That's a concern that I've put on the table before, and I would only ask that since we, in your first presentation, said that in order to launch the program, the largest district in the cohort would front the funds. Is this 1.3 million part of that? It was to front LCEC at that time, it wasn't the Low Country Virtual, to the estimated cost for startup? That was in your first, two months back, your first report to us. Is that in here? Did we front LCEC, the initial startup cost, to then front Low Country Virtual for these?
We've not had any money change hands at this point with Low Country. This is our portion of the cost for our students, which is very similar to the cost that was this year when we ran it ourselves.
Okay.
Yeah.
And I think just a caution that as the fiscal agent, we're going to see all the money leave. It would be very important that we may see some of that money come in so it doesn't appear that CCSD is fully funding the consortium's virtual education. Then, the next, I have a couple of questions. You said that these are ESER II. If we roll ESER II into ESER III, which rules supersede? If you, that was your plan, to take ESER II funds, roll them with ESER III, create this plan. Can you still use ESER II funds? Remember, ESER III has much more stringent rules, and they are specifically Title I monies, which, can you combine them and still use them for separate uses?
No, ma'am. The three categories of funding that we receive from the federal government must be kept separate, the accounting is separate, and every dollar must be spent according to the stipulations for each of those grants.
So even though we're combining them in terms of how we're going to use it at the end of the summer, we're still going to have separate flows for the accounting process?
Yeah, I think when we say "combine," we simply mean that for ease of discussion involving the public and the board. Mr. Kennedy and his staff have to keep meticulous records, again, about every single dollar.
And then the last question is, when it comes to the, you said this meaningful engagement and thoughtful planning, which I highly recommend, how is the community going to know who got chosen to be on the committee? That your timeframe is, is that that would be done by June? And that that, in October, if you read Dr. Postlethwaite's report to us and the committee of the whole meeting, that group doesn't necessarily disband in October, they turn into an advisory committee. When do we find out how y'all chose the people you chose? And who they are? And what's the meeting schedule?
So we are working now on representatives in the categories that we shared with the board. Our intent is to share more information with the board in June. The planning team is just that, they're a planning team to look at the data, to look at the research, to make some recommendations, and then to establish listening sessions so that the community, anyone in the community who's interested, it can be widely represented and involved. Our initial thinking is that, for the most part, we would like people involved who have children in Charleston County schools. So that's, so we talked about five principals, 10 teachers. We're concentrating on primarily Title I schools. And then, as we think about adding community representatives, we're just now working on the categories of which entities we should consider. An example would be Trident United Way because they provide programming for the district and they serve the larger community. So our thinking is we would contact the CEO of Trident United Way and say, here's what we're doing, we'd like a representative, are you interested in participating? So we're happy to, we want to be very, very transparent about that, Mrs. Coates, and our intent is to share that information with the board in June. Thank you.
I have a, can I, I'm sorry. I was just going to just kind of say something, like the committee, like what she was saying, the committee, is it already formed? And how did we know about the committee and who's going to be on it? Or how was it chosen, I guess?
That there's a planning team. The planning team's responsibility, the planning team is not selected yet. We are in the process of selecting, suggesting members of the planning team based on the categories that we provided to the board.
We who?
I am working on that, as well as some of the cabinet members. There will be five principals who will be involved very soon, 10 teachers. We are working to suggest individuals or entities around the framework that I provided to the board. Again, the planning team's job is not to make decisions regarding expenditures. The planning team's job is to figure out how to involve the greater community and how to do this rather quickly because we have to submit our plan by August. So the planning team's job is not to make decisions, but to suggest to the community, here's a framework, here are some data we've looked at, these are some suggestions, what do you think? And then simply to listen as we involve various segments of the community throughout the coming weeks.
And that's understood. We just wanted to make sure that even the planning community is representative of the community, and that was our, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Dr. French?
In terms of suggesting or recommending people, you were talking about someone at the United Way, but that's not very, that doesn't say the same thing to me about involving the community. You know, people who already are in positions of power, being on this planning group, doesn't really speak to me the way having parents or maybe PTA representatives involved. And in fact, in a lot of our advisory committees, citizen advisory committees, we advertise and ask people to submit an application. So do we not have the time to do that?
So I will simply say, had the board wanted this matter to be on the agenda tonight and had placed it on the agenda, I could get the materials that I've shared with the board in prior sessions. There are parents on the team, those parents are coming primarily from Title I schools. And the example I gave had to do with the five or so slots that are left over, trying to think how to get greater community representation. The work isn't done, it's underway, it's in process. I'm happy to place this on the next board agenda for June, but we need May to get some work done first. Please.
Okay, Dr. Fraser?
She had one more.
I'm sorry, Dr. Fraser, you had another question?
Yes, I was a little confused. I know this was asked and answered in email to the board. We talked about what was being asked for from the schools, and Dr. Williams said something a little bit different. So extended learning time opportunities. So are we talking, are people requesting professional development time? Are they asking for more time with students to help them learn? Can you help clarify?
So I gave a range. There were a lot of things submitted in the 80-plus plans that we received, so I wanted to give you a gist of what the majority of people asked for. So there were some people that asked for some additional time for professional development, but I just gave that example of extended learning time because we saw a lot of people saying that these kids have gaps. And one of the ways we know that we can address the gaps are to provide some more time for learning for those kiddos.
What kind of structure do you see? Because I don't know if we can expand the school day, but are there after-school programs? Are there different ways to get kids more instructional time?
Well, what some schools are doing, utilizing during the school day, for instance, is they may ask for an intervention. Some schools did not have an interventionist because they didn't, quote-unquote, earn one. So what they're asking for is an interventionist so they can create a period during the day so those kiddos can go in and have some time in front of a math intervention. This is a perfect example of how they're doing that extended learning time during the school day.
How do you earn an interventionist? I'm sorry.
Dr. Fraser?
That's a good question.
It's based on allocations, ma'am, so that's part of the formula that's in the budget process of where the need is. So schools are, based on a funding formula and the number of kids, we make decisions on allocations. So that's our typical approach to making sure there's equity across the system when we make decisions on FTEs.
And in addition to that, some schools ask for an additional because even though they may have had the opportunity within their allocations to purchase one, they feel like, given COVID gaps that we've identified, there could be need or use for another one. Dr. Fraser?
Yes, Dr. Williams, looking at the targeted interventions based on school-level data, because Baptist Hill has been in influx for such a long period of time, was there someone there to accommodate the necessary supports that was needed in that school?
Are you asking in reference to a plan being submitted?
Yes.
Yes, they submitted a plan, ma'am.
Okay.
Absolutely.
And will that plan be available if we wanted to look at it?
It was an application, per se, where they just kind of put down some data and basically spoke through what they were going to do to implement, I guess, plan or strategies that they put in place or outlined. So it wasn't anything that we planned to share, but I don't think it's an issue with us sharing the plan that a school may have submitted, if we can go through the principal for that reason.
Okay.
Okay, Dr. French?
So I just want to clarify because Ms. Coates brought my attention to it. So our CCSD's contribution for Low Country Virtual Academy, so those are two different, Low Country Education Consortium is what we agreed to work with to have virtual school. But Low Country Virtual Academy is a completely separate entity. It's a nonprofit. So I just want to make sure we understand, because you put Low Country Virtual Academy in this presentation, and I just want to understand, which one are we really talking about and what?
It's the Low Country Education Consortium, and what you're seeing when you go online is the registration of the name, Low Country Virtual Academy, which we want to use, and we had to reserve the name. So the superintendent's asked the leader of the Low Country Education Consortium to file the papers with the state secretary's office, I'm not sure which division, to preserve the name, and that's what you're seeing. It's all Low Country Education Consortium. It's still.
So all the money will go to LCEC? Money will not flow through Low Country Virtual Academy? Does that, that sounds like what you're saying?
There is, that's right. So money will not go to either one. The Charleston County Schools will be the fiscal agent. Each district will be charged a certain rate for every child who attends. Right now, they're saying 3,200 to probably 3,600, depending on the number of students who participate. There are at least six districts who are participating, a seventh has asked to participate, but parents don't have it committed in all of those districts. So each district will pay, Charleston County Schools will pay approximately 1.3 million, depending on how many students we have. That money actually comes to Charleston County Schools. We've agreed to be fiscal agent for one more year, but it just flows through our district. It's a flow-through. It's, because we're taking care of the.
And then, just one more thing. Because it's not clear what's going to happen in the fall, and parents are concerned about the fact that they don't want their kids to go to school with kids that aren't wearing masks because they've opted out, are we going to open up the applications process again so that parents can apply to the Virtual Academy if they have changed their mind?
I don't know that that would be possible. We cannot take very many more students in this virtual arrangement. Now, if the board were to ask us to stand up some other arrangement, we would do that, but no, ma'am, we do not plan another whole-scale admissions date window for students. We need to get back as close to normal as we can this coming year.
Okay, I just know that there's a lot of parents who are concerned because the youngest kids won't be able to be vaccinated in time for the start of school in August.
We have heard that concern, yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. All right, thank you for the report. At this time now, we're going to item, I'm sorry, Ms. Coakley, you have your hand, you have a question?
No, that's an old hand, it hadn't gone away. I'm okay.
All right, sounds great. All right, item 9A. Mr. Kennedy? That be you, sir?
Yes, I'm sorry, I'm waiting for the PowerPoint to come up. There it is. So good, good evening, board members. So this is the first reading of the Fiscal Year '22 budget. The PowerPoint presentation that I have here is a short summary of what has been presented to you all in the Committee of the Whole. Also, this passed in the last week, you should have received a hard copy of the proposed FY21 First Reading Budget Book, and so that should have been delivered to your homes, as well as, I believe, you may have received an electronic copy also. And so what I would do is go through the summary, and then you have, between now and the Committee of the Whole in June, which I believe is June 14th, to submit questions to staff. The way we have operated in the last few years, we would request that to send questions through email. They can come to me and to superintendent's office. The staff then compiles a Q&amp;A document, and we update that as questions come in, and then we submit that to the board in time for the first reading, excuse me, of the Committee of the Whole in June, as well as updates between the Committee of the Whole on June 14th and the final vote on June 28th. We have a couple of questions in this presentation, and then certainly encourage you all to submit others via that process. Next slide, please. Again, from the Committee of the Whole in May, board priorities. So we will focus on both the general operating fund budget to support the board priorities, as well as the presentation you heard a few minutes ago with the ESER funds, ESER II funds and portions of the ESER I funds. Next slide. And then, just as a reminder, always when we're developing the budget, we have these five items in mind: maximize revenues as much as possible, to prioritize expenditure needs, again, those prioritizations based on the board priorities, balance the budget, that's a state requirement, maintain fund balance at above a board policy of 16.67%. And then to minimize the tax increases to the greatest extent possible. The next slide summarizes at a very high level the revenues and expenditures in the proposed budget, which is the second column of numbers that says First Reading FY22. The first column is the budgeted numbers for fiscal year '21, the current year, and we show the differences here between the two years. So you can see the differences in the revenues between fiscal years '21 and the proposed '22 in the first reading, as well as the differences between the expenditures. And then the bottom line here shows the amount of fund balance that was budgeted in fiscal years '21 and proposed, actually budgeted in '21 and proposed for '22, and the variance there. Next slide. Now, this is for reference, so we looked at four years, actually, three years of actuals in the fiscal year '22 proposed in the first reading. And so what we show here are the milage increases of each of those four years. You can see in fiscal year '19, we had 3.96, 3.48 mil increase in fiscal year '20 and '21. We did not, the board did not adopt a milage increase, nor did the staff propose one. And for fiscal year '22, the proposed milage increase is 3.4. And you can see the amount of revenue that's been, that was generated in each of those milage increases, from 9.87 up to proposed $10.1 million for fiscal year '22. And what I show also, next to those dollar increases in the milage, the actual budgeted increase in expenditures of each, from between each of those years. So for instance, in fiscal year '19, there was a $9.5 million increase in revenue from a milage increase compared to a third, $2.3 million. compared to a third, two point three million dollar increase in expenditure. So, what that indicates is that we've used a substantial amount. We relied a lot on fund balance to be able to cover those expenditures. And however, we've done that and at the same time, be able to maintain the minimum of sixteen point six seven percent, which actually is shown on the next slide. So, this is one of my favorite slides to show. It just simply shows the history of our fund balance. And the green line says that that is the board level of sixteen point six seven percent in the intent of developing the budget and monitoring the budget throughout the years to remain at or above that sixteen point six seven percent. Next slide. So, the next series of slides from the presentation that I made for the committee of the whole two weeks ago as well as these next series of slides lifted directly out of the fiscal year twenty-one budget book, the first reading that was submitted to you all on Friday. So, just taking a look at it from a summary standpoint, we show the fiscal, again, fiscal year twenty-one budget amounts of revenues and expenditures. And then, we have the projected amounts for fiscal year twenty-two. When we come down that column in the third column, our starting point is that we have nineteen point eight million dollars to help fund fiscal year twenty-two expenditure increases. Coming on down shows a required increase of twenty-three point nine million dollars. And we'll obviously go over those briefly in a minute, but those things like required increases associated with teacher salary increases, retirement expenses, et cetera. And then, learning services, compliance and expansions, and then other considerations. Again, which there are slides in the presentation that cover that, those items for a total proposed increase of forty, forty point eight million dollars. And then, so we have nineteen point eight million dollars, the difference between the revenues and expenditures to be able to cover that forty point eight million dollars. And so, below the nineteen point six there, nineteen point eight, excuse me, that says projected funds available for allocation. We show how we would cover the rest of the forty point eight million dollars, which is twenty-one million dollars through a combination of various portions of the fund balance including reductions in the current year expenditures fiscal year twenty-one to carry over into the balance sheet for next year, next year's budget. Next slide. The next four slides then breaks down the forty point eight million dollar expenditure number into its various components. So, on this slide here at the top, it shows the state mandated increase, increases. I've talked briefly about the salary increases for teachers. I've talked briefly about the retirement the increase in retirement expenditures and then, of course, the health and dental increases. So, that's thirteen million dollars of the forty plus million dollars that is, that's mandated by the state. Some of which, some of which is funded and some of which is not. For instance, in the thousand dollar salary increase of four point seven million dollars, we anticipate based on the Senate budget projections to receive roughly half of that, fifty percent of that four point seven million dollars in revenue. So, then, the district would have to fund the other remaining portion as well as the one percent increase in employer retirement rate, et cetera. The other required increases at the bottom of this slide picks up things that are primarily related. Well, some of them are related to schools, so charter schools and meeting streets. So, this is simply following the state funding formula. So, we're anticipating a four point three million dollar increase in that expenditure. West Ashley Center for Advanced Studies, a new school, has to be staffed. Translation services associated with the DOJ settlement, eight hundred and four six thousand. Property and flood insurance increases, the two point five million dollars. And I mentioned last time that this represents two years' worth of cost. There was, there was no cost increase on that, those insurance policies last year. Board approved increasing the certified head start teachers and then changes in the mission critical. So, the last time I presented here, there was, this section was actually changed because of a question from the human scopes. And I showed the net between an expansion and decreases. So, for fiscal year twenty, twenty-two for mission critical, we're expanding initiatives by one point one million dollars, but there's a one-time decrease in the current year, three point three million dollars. So, I didn't show those two items. I showed the net of two point, I think, two point two million dollars. Next slide, please.
I think you're one slide off. I think maybe.
Sorry, Maggie, there you go. Thank you. I'm sorry, go back one. Thank you. So, operational, required increases in operational division, transportation contract. That was so, that was awarded last year. Changes in utilities and then other operational contracts increases. These are contracts with escalation costs for escalation increases, for example. Then, of course, the footprint growth, you have more square feet in the district, in the schools and those have to be maintained, that additional space. Other requests for operations planning and real estate to help with that work there. Same thing with the nursing, athletics, maintenance and ops, plant ops and transportation. Other requests for, that's a decrease here of a cost in this particular area. Now, I'm going through this extremely fast. Of course, the other chief officers that run these divisions are present. So, when we get to the end of this, we have specific questions for those areas. They and I can handle those. And then, over to the next slide on learning services. The increase in bilingual secretaries primarily at the, that's the ESOL piece there. Changes in alternative programs, media services. We have two items here for exceptional children. One of those items is because the IDA grant carryover is no longer available, has been used. So, that those positions have to be allocated over to the general operating fund. And then, the other item here is for the one point seven is the just increase, increases in needs for those students. And then, changes in the maternity program. So, those are the learning services compliance requests. And then, on the next slide, these are the expansion requests for learning services. And so, there are a number of these, significant portion, the majority of them actually relate to a school base. And you can see those on the middle section here where it says school base at the East Cooper Center for Advanced Studies, Lucy Beckham, Deer Park, Cooper River Center for Advanced Studies, West National High School, Earl College, St. John's and Baptist Hill High Schools. And then, on the right-hand side of this slide, it shows those increases in the central office, which totals a hundred and ten thousand dollars versus the one point six million dollars for a school-based expansion. And then, the last slide in this section. At the top, it shows the changes, proposed changes in the human resources. Move maximum teacher staff from twenty-five up to twenty-six years. The teacher staff increase of two million dollars. The additional to move all other non-teachers to ninety-five percent of market. Now, I know I received a question about the cost of doing, going up to ninety-eight percent as was voted on by the board in October. And I'll talk about that in a minute about what that cost would be. And then, the last item here on the human resources, remove classified staff years of higher, service higher cap from fifteen to eighteen years. It used to be, until this current year, twelve years of if our employee would come into the district and had more than twelve years of experience outside of the district, they would be capped at receiving salary at twelve, twelve years. So, this year, twenty-one, fiscal year twenty-one, that was moved to fifteen years. And then, for fiscal year twenty-two, the proposed amount is to move it up to eighteen years. Other considerations down at the bottom here, safety and risk services requests coming from the legal, the legal office. Communications and strategy requests coming from the communications division. The next one coming from my division, finance funded by indirect. So, these are two FTEs. One is to help manage the additional funds that are coming in. That would be in the, that position would be in the budget office. And one as a deputy CFO position that I briefed the board on. Those two positions to be funded through the indirect cost that's the rate that's applied to the federal grants that are coming in. And then, a hundred and fourteen thousand for the GOL portion of the disparity study. So, next slide. So, those represent the numbers. Again, these are the numbers that were presented to the ordinary finance committee, the numbers that were presented to the board and committee of the whole, the numbers that were submitted to you all last week through the budget book here, the first reading of the budget book. And just for the new board members, just for information, this is, the first reading of the budget book is relatively thin. I think it's ninety-seven pages. There'd be a lot more detail, probably about three times, not four times this amount of data in the following reading of the budget book when we submit to you all in June. So, the last page here, these are what I've been able to ascertain as the primary questions coming from board members on the budget. And I'll go over these in a second, but just reiterate that between now and when we get through the budget for this, in June, if you would submit those, any additional questions, then we will, we will compose a Q and A document. So, one question came up, it's more than once. What, why, how much would it cost to go to, instead of ninety-five percent of market, go to ninety-eight percent of market? And so, what I show here, the cost to take all non-teaching staff to ninety-eight percent of market. So, that's four point, excuse me, five point two million dollars, which is one point eight mil. So, currently, to get to ninety-five percent, I think that number is like five point nine million dollars. So, this would be eleven point something million dollars to go to fully to ninety-eight percent. And then, based on an email I received, I think also the question was asked. If I misinterpreted, I still answered the question. What would it cost to go to, if we look at the non-teaching staff, what would it cost to only increase the hourly? And so, that number is two point three million dollars, a point eight mils. And also, I was asked about different options for funding. So, this, this is what we're talking, obviously talking about the general operating fund, general operating fund. So, one question was, could the S funds be used for this purpose? And so, the answer is no. They asked, we know that there are specific requirements for the federal dollars and then very specific, so there's not option in either of the three funding sources to be able to just apply to salary increase. So, that's, that's not an option. And then, another question on that was if S funds were not usable, what about fund balance? So, so, yes, so, yes, fund balance can be used, but it's not my recommendation to use fund balance for this purpose. There's two reasons for that. One is that the use of fund balance is a one-time revenue source. So, it doesn't recur. So, we're locked in to a one-time revenue source, but the expenditure is ongoing. So, if we were to add five point two million dollars from fund balance, then that starts us off with this route in the whole for fiscal year twenty-three, the following fiscal year. And then, the other, the other reason is that I think it's important that the board manages the fund balance very, very tightly for reasons that I've already briefed the school board on in terms of the need to have a fund source for emergency. And then, going into the future, assuming, which I have to assume that we would have some success in some of the expenditures that we use for programs, et cetera, under the S funds. And all of the S funds go away in three, less than three and a half years. And so, we would need to be able to figure out how to have, how to sustain some of this work in the one, the ways that my staff now looking at this is trying to figure out how can we use the fund balance over that period of time to commit, to designate a part of the fund balance for sustainable, sustainability of successful programs that may be implemented in the S, in the S work. So, so, from those two perspectives, I would, I would S and no because that's not, we cannot do it under requirements in with the fund balance, I think, from a fiscal standpoint. I mean, I would not recommend that. And then, the other question here, FTE for translation services, school or central office based. And in the numbers that we just reviewed quickly, the bilingual secretaries, school-based and the translation services or central office based. So, that concludes the brief summary of FY21 proposed first reading budget. What questions do you have?
Okay, all right. Is there any question from Mr. Kennedy? Okay.
Yes, ma'am, I did say that. So, so, yes, I did say that. So, and I said, what questions do you have? So, so, I contradicted myself, so. Thank you, ma'am.
I'm only following what the CFO says. What's your comment, Dr. French?
I'd just like to mention, because I received the budget after one o'clock on Friday, is this protocol to give board members the budget on Friday and expect them to have some sense of what is going on by Monday? That's my first comment I want to make. And then, my second one is that it seems as if we're still overloading the agenda. And since our primary role is to just look at funding and so forth and with all of the other things that's going on, I'm just going to ask the superintendent and the chair to look at how we're placing so many things on the agenda at one time. And that's my comment, that we can space this out. I know that nobody's ready to go home because we need to just stay here and do some work. But just consider that. Thank you.
Okay, all right. Ms. Coates?
And I'll be brief, Joyce, but this is, it just sort of came to me. But one of the things is, I see you're, again, borrowing from special revenue and EIA in addition to using fund balance to budget. I, that's, I don't think a lot of people realize that we're talking about a hundred, hundred to a hundred and five million dollars in special revenue and EIA and it's never in the budget book or any of the discussions. Will that be in the second reading?
So, in the second reading, we will have all funding sources. So, if you.
So, you will do a consolidated of all sources?
That's right, yes. Which we do every year in the second reading, but not in the first reading.
Okay, because of course, the question is, if you can borrow this much, could you borrow more to not have to raise mils? That's, that's going to be a question we'd have to discuss before second reading. If you, because you're borrowing some, could you borrow more?
When you say borrow.
You call it transfer. You were doing a transfer from funds of special revenue and that's in your budget book today. Could you do more? Could you take more transfers in?
So, it depends on not me, it depends on a number of factors.
That's something I would want to discuss.
Number one, if the funds in any given special revenue fund, if those funds have been expended for the purpose of which they were established, then, so no. So, ideally, that's what should happen. And so, when we do a transfer, it's looking at when we have some challenges in spending those funds, then we'll make sure that we don't, you know, return the funds.
And the, and I apologize, but this wasn't in the presentation. And the, and I, I apologize, but this wasn't in the presentation that we had before. But, um, the ARP includes three billion dollars for special ed. Now granted, that may have been a timing issue because ARP didn't come out until March, but. I see that we've got three million dollars worth of increases in special ed requests. Is using that money from the ARP Act not part, not an option?
So, so the, the ARP, which is the actual, is S of three, so S of three and ARP are the same. And so those plans are not due to the state until, uh, August, end of August, I think, August twenty-fourth.
Right. Are they not touchable for the twenty-one, twenty-two school years, the question? Could, could we use those funds and the, those three billion dollars was, are our portion of it? And for the special ed, you've got three million, um, in your budget book for special ed requests.
Yeah.
Could we not use the ARP funds for that?
I think it would be difficult from a timing standpoint to be able to do that for fiscal year twenty-two. Uh, potentially for fiscal year twenty-three, uh, which those, those, that one point seven to one point nine million dollars as we referred to. Uh, those numbers, I mean, those expenditures will carry over into fiscal year twenty-three. And so, uh, that's a possibility we would have to look at. But from a timing standpoint, we wouldn't, we would not be able to make that determination between now and the second reading of the budget.
All right, thank you. Uh, Mr. Kennedy, I believe you're up next for the Department of Revenue Compliance.
Motion?
Yeah, we have to have this as an action item.
Hang on one second. Yeah, go ahead. Dr. French, and then Ms. Darby.
So I, I am, this is my first time to do this budget process, so I hope that you'll just bear with me for a minute. This is, this is the first reading, obviously, we're going to get more detail later, but I would be. I, I'm assuming that we're not going to see big changes in the budget. And the idea that, that was asked about getting all of our non-teachers up to ninety-eight percent of market value. Our market competitiveness, that's something that the board committed to in October, if, if at all possible. And I don't really see anything here that says we can't do it. We just, we may have to make some hard choices. And I would like to understand if the board is, is trying to, is going to abandon that? Or we're going to try to live up to that promise we made in October? Because it's not in the budget now. And if we approve the first reading, I don't know if we are going to be able to get it into the budget. We can't. So how does that mechanism work? Do we have to ask for that to happen at this motion or do we have to wait?
When is the second reading scheduled for?
So the second reading is scheduled for June twenty-eighth, and the committee of the whole for June is June fourteenth. So any changes between, um, between the first reading, uh, the numbers that you have before you. That the board desires, desires to make would need to be made between now and, uh. Uh, I would say June fourteenth, so again, this, this time to debate, get those incorporated into, uh, into the budget.
Okay, this, all right. I, I wanted to get that clarification so that this is an item that, uh, we can consider at the June, uh, fourteenth, uh, Cal meeting.
So we could add it as an item to, to change the budget for that?
Upon board approval. However, um, I, I would say to that, to the fact, to the point of. Uh, when is the audit and finance meeting?
Well, the audit and finance committee is June one, so it's, um, was Tuesday next week, but.
Now, the, when is the date of the audit and finance committee actions coming out of it are the ones that dropped the.
I'm sorry, Ms., hang on one second. I've got two things going on, one done. Uh, Don, you finished? You said June?
June one.
June one, okay. Uh, Ms. Green?
So, Don, I want to be clear that should we decide to fund teachers at ninety-eight percent?
Non-teachers.
We will have to make some changes to these allocated.
Or increase the mileage.
To take the money out of fund balance, and I certainly would want to do that.
I don't think we're capped at the three point four mil increase. There can be an increase.
So all of the.
Okay, she just said that.
All right, hang on one second, guys. We've got too many conversations going at one time. This is very important. So let's, let's be clear to, uh, Ms. Green has the floor. Uh, Ms. Green, if you can repeat your questions, please, we can get it clarified.
Clear on if, if, during the entry, the source of funding, the particular source of funding.
So, so there are, um, three options. One is to use a fund balance. Two is a one point eight mil increase. And the third option is to cut elsewhere.
Okay, so it is, it is a pleasure to the board then to have this item included at the Cal meeting, uh, for discussion.
Yeah.
Uh, as an action item. All right. That, 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 Bridge?
Yes, and I just want to reiterate my request to you and that post-week, that once we submit our questions, can. Uh, the two of you negotiate not adding so many items on the next meeting so that we'll have those questions answered.
So, so agenda items are, are listed, you know, according to priority, when decisions need to be made. Uh, and this has been a very, 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 very stressful year for a lot of people. And there's a lot of work that has been, uh, done by staff to make sure that we are able to get answers and give time for the work to be done. Even if some of that work has to come back to the board for consideration. Uh, so, so a lot of this, you know, at some point in time, um, could allow the agenda to be a little bit more than normal. But how, let me interject this point as, as an opportunity. That when we do get our information, our packet information, it is, it is important for us as board members to make sure that we study them. Uh, and you can ask your questions, you can generate your questions prior to board meetings and get answers to your questions. Uh, and those, those questions will be shared with other board members as well. Uh, you have the opportunity of the day of that meeting, uh, between ten and eleven, that also has been set aside for board members. So it is important to, and there's a lot of questions that are, that are asked, and you can ask questions, that's your job, you're supposed to get clarity. Uh, but to have a better understanding is important, that you go ahead and ask your questions early on. So that when we do get into the presentation, get into the meeting, when the information is shared to all board members. Uh, you, you can have a better understanding, uh, as they are going through the presentation and through the slides of exactly what's being brought to you.
And, and the reason why I said that, Reverend Mack, um, and it's not just, um, me, I think. I mean, we have five new board members here, and certainly it has been a challenge for me to keep up with everything that's going on. But for, uh, people who are listening in and want to be a part of the board meetings. And I'm hearing, you know, I'm not engaging because your meetings are so long. And all I'm asking is that when it comes down to the budget items for the next board meeting or any other time, that we're talking about. Uh, fiscal accountability, that we try not to overload the budget, I'm going to say the agenda. So that we can get participation from our, uh, our questions and from our audiences listening in.
Okay, well, I'll more time for, uh, the next budget reading for the budget discussion. Uh, Ms. Darby?
Um, I'd like to make a motion.
Go ahead.
To approve the first reading of the fiscal year twenty-two budget using a three point four mil increase. And I'd like to just clarify for new board members too, that, that, so this is first reading. And in the time I've been on the board, sometimes things have changed. In, in, in those three solutions that Mr. Kennedy presented, so that's work for us. We want to see what happens, what you talked about, and that's work that we need to do between now and audit and finance.
All right, that motion was made by Ms. Darby, and I don't know who said.
It was Lauren, or Joyce.
Okay, let's head her again, Ms. Green seconded. So, uh, just before we, uh, cast the vote, are there any questions about the motion? Uh, Dr. Coles?
Thank you. Um, when we provide information in response to the question on the floor about going to ninety-eight percent. Um, may we have the board's permission to look at what a, um, a, uh, cost of living increase across the board would look like? Because there isn't one in this proposal for next year. And I would like to see what a cost of living increase, um, across the board would do to get us closer to the ninety-eight percent. Because teachers, teachers are not currently in line to get a cost of living adjustment from Charleston County Schools. Where this coming year, we gave a cost of living adjustment for this year, so that they would have it, uh, the benefit of it this year. But there's not one, an additional one going into next year, and some districts are doing a cost of living for both years. So if, if we're going to look at things again, if, if it's satisfactory, I'd like to see what a two percent cost of living increase. Would, and include teachers as well, would do, uh, with respect to getting us closer to the ninety-eight percent of market for those positions that are not currently sitting there.
Okay, so you will allow then, uh, so at the next, at the Cal meeting, then you will have those two case scenarios. And also, uh, to include those two case scenarios with the explanation of funding scenarios for, for both options.
Yes, sir.
At, at the committee of the whole meeting. Is that the pleasure to the board?
Yes, yes, good, good. I, I, I hate to do this, but that does, it, it brings up the question, if I may, Reverend Mack. The legisla, are you saying that you know the legislature is not going to fund a cost of living increase in the twenty-twenty-two budget? Because that's where that comes from. The state funds the COLA for state employees, then flows to us because we're part of the state employees. Or, so you, you said that, that that's not happening?
Some districts have already voted to give their teachers a cost of living increase. Um, Don, you want to?
I mean, so, so the state does not fund a hundred percent of any mandated salary increases for Charleston County School District. So I gave an example for the, uh, the thousand dollar increase with teachers, uh, four point seven million dollars. The state, the current version of the state budget funds fifty percent of that. Um, and so.
There's an anticipation that if there's a COLA in the state budget, they're still not going to fully fund that. Thank you.
So we will include those case scenarios at the, the Cal meeting. Uh, and also, if you can, just make a note that at, at the next Cal meeting, that we allow extra time, uh, to talk about the budget. Uh, and explanations so that, uh, others that may have additional questions will be able to, uh, get those, uh, questions answered. All right, if you can go ahead and cast the vote. Okay, that motion passes. Uh, item nine B is for information that was included in your packet. And, uh, are there any questions in reference to, uh, the Southland Department of Revenue Compliance audit report? Okay, night, item nine C, uh, the external audit firm update, uh, is for information that was included in your packet. Uh. Are there any questions in reference to that? Item ninety is the disparity study proposal, um, that was included in your packet for information. Are there any questions in reference to that item?
I have.
Uh, Dr. Bridge?
Yes, and my question is, will we have, uh, phase five, will be in operation during the, before the study is completed? And I may have asked this before, uh, Mr. Broery, are we going to go ahead with phase five? Um, until when?
The board approved to start a phase of wave one of the phase five program, so designs will begin on the projects of wave one this year. Per board direction.
Okay. All right, uh, item, item nine E, the monthly capital report, that's included in your packet. Are there any, any questions? Item nine F, the monthly financial report was included in your packet for information. Is there any question?
I would just make a request that when we get to the end of this fiscal year, when we do the final expenditures report that you, that we include more than just the GOF. We roll up the special revenue and the EIA, because those are funds that we also should see that have been spent appropriately to budget.
Yeah, and so most of the, uh, most, so I don't disagree, and most of the, the, um. Special revenue funds, this will be a different, within September thirty, uh, which, you know, aligns with the federal government's fiscal year.
Okay, so that'd be then that we can see a roll-up?
Yeah, I, I can't remember how the, how we do it with the, uh, with the financial statements, but we'll take a look at that.
Okay, item ten A, or?
Move to approve the expense. Second?
I'm sorry, I had another question.
Okay, just one second. Moved by Ms. Coles, second by Dr. French. Ms. Coakley, what is your question, writing and reference item ten?
Um, I apologize, it was actually just like, just a quick question. It was, I guess, uh, other questions, related items, just a quick question.
Right, this is item ten A. You, you have a question about that?
Prior to that, go up one.
The monthly financial report?
Yeah, I just said it was other questions, item that said other questions, and I just wanted to ask a quick question.
Okay, all right, let's, uh, we have a motion on the floor, let's deal with item ten A, and then we'll come back to your question. Ms. Darby?
I'm sorry.
Okay, that motion passes. Ms. Coakley, you had a question?
Now, I just want to know where we were, like, just a quick status on the, um, D ten, uh, update, that's all.
D ten?
Yes, or just a, uh, update on the planning process.
What, D ten? Okay, that, that, so that item is not listed on the agenda, is that something I'm, I'm missing here?
Disregard, never mind, thank you. It was just a question, overall general question.
Okay, if you can, Ms. Coakley, just submit that question, uh, through the superintendent's office for an update, and, and that your question will be answered, okay? All right, upcoming meetings, uh, June fourteenth will be the Cal meeting, uh, June sixteenth, as a reminder, uh, will be the Board Governance Workshop. Uh, from twelve to four-thirty, and then on the twenty-eighth, the regular board meeting. Entertaining motion for adjournment? This meeting now officially adjourned.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.